I believe we are ready to begin the introductory video. Good evening. I'd like to call the January 17, 2023 meeting of the Buncombe County Commission to Order. Thank you all for being with us this evening. Let's begin our meeting with the Pledge of Allegiance. Please rise and join us in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where it stands, one nation, under God, individual liberty and justice for all.
I want to announce that any members of the public attending the meeting who are using the county parking garage next door or who use public transit to attend the meeting can get validation for your parking or transit passes at the meeting. Please just see one of the deputies on your way out and they can validate that for you. Want to read the ethics reminder to the board. In accordance with the Code of Ethics adopted by the Board, all county commissioners have a duty to obey all applicable laws regarding official actions, to uphold the integrity and independence of the office, to avoid impropriety in the exercise of official duties, to faithfully perform the duties of the office, and to conduct the affairs of the governing board in an open and public manner. Is there any item on the agenda, the outcome of which would have a direct, substantial, and readily identifiable financial impact for any board member? Does any board member have a financial interest in any public contract coming before the board today? There being none, all board members have a duty and obligation to vote on any matters voted on by the Board of Commissioners at our meeting this evening. We come to the consent agenda. Commissioners, are there any questions about any items on the consent agenda? Does any member of the public have any questions about any items on our consent agenda? Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda and to follow the remainder of the agenda as published?
Still moved?
All in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Okay, we now come to the public comment section of our meeting. We've got several folks who have signed up to speak during public comment. We'll call on these four people in the order they signed up, and then if any other members of the public wish to speak during public comment, there'll be an opportunity at that time, once we get through the folks on the signup sheet. Everybody who addresses the board, please just come up to the podium. You'll have three minutes to address the board. You'll get an orange light when you have 30 seconds left and a red light when the three minutes is up. And we do ask that you discontinue your comments after the three minutes because we want to give everyone the same amount of time. First person that's signed up is Minion Durham.
Good evening. I attended the Buncombe County 2043 demonstration at Skyland Library, and I'm very disturbed at the proposed plans for so much inappropriate development throughout the county, but especially in Penner's Cove. The plan is pro-high-density development with no burden on the developers to pay upfront for the infrastructure updates that are necessitated by their ambitions. The inadequate roads, water, and sewer, lack of sidewalks, public transportation, and greenways make life very difficult with little quality, especially in South Asheville. We learned beginning Christmas Eve that $10 million a year in water system upgrades and maintenance is far from adequate. The developers must be required to pay a fee based on number of units to create more capital for all infrastructure. One goal stated in the 2043 plan is to decrease allowable impervious surfaces on new development. That is not what happens with high-density proposals. Did we not learn anything from Tropical Storm Fred in 2021 and the increasing high-water events due to climate change? High density in these steep mountainous coves is insanity. The Penner's Cove area from Mills Gap Road north to 74 should not be classified complete community. The area infrastructure is strained now. The roads are incapable of handling traffic, additional traffic. Semi-tractor trailers get stuck at the north end of Penner's Cove, which blocks all traffic. There is no access to sidewalks or greenways, no public transportation, and the KO Penner's eat proposal is not small block sizes. That conservation easement concept simply doesn't work on Penner's Cove, and you will sacrifice the stated goal of maintaining agricultural rural landscapes for unsustainable high-density development. Four to 18 dwelling units per acre, as the plan proposes, is simply outrageous. The adjacent lands to the east, including Merrill's Cove, Bob Burnwell, Webb Creek, Gravely Creek, Gravely Branch to Concord Road on the southern boundary, looks just like Penner's Cove, but is designated rural community. There is no difference in these two areas. They both lack adequate roads, public infrastructure, walkability, and greenways. You must change Penner's Cove from complete community designation to rural community designation. Thank you.
Thank you. The next person is Scott Coolman.
Good evening. On Wednesday, I had the privilege of attending the Board of Adjustment meeting where the Doran Company was making a, applying for a special use permit for their project on Old Charlotte Highway across the street from Reynolds High School. What's interesting is this is the same developer as the developer on Penner's Cove Road. Different owners, but same developer. Some observations from attending the meeting. The density for the two properties are completely different. The property on Old Charlotte Highway is zoned R3. Property on Penner's Cove is residential low density. The topography is similar in that the bottom roughly half of the parcel is relatively flat, under, or 25% slope, going up to steep slopes over 50%. What's interesting is the Charlotte Highway development, they're not utilizing any conservation easement because they don't need to, because they already have the zoning for the high density. Like, contrary, on Penner's Cove, the only reason that the developers are applying for a conservation easement is to obtain the density bonus so they can achieve the same density as the Charlotte Highway. I ask that you would deny the conservation easement application on Penner's Cove Road and let them build according to the current zoning. Thank you.
Thank you. The next person on the list is Andy Flavell.
Hello, and thank you for this opportunity. I don't really have a lot of knowledge about the zoning codes and a lot of the particulars that these two prior speakers knew a great deal about, but I do have, I think, common sense. There are two conservation easements which are being proposed, all right? And one of them, under current zoning, would allow four houses because there's a minimum of 10 acres per house. And if you do the math and you see the first section that is they're asking for a conservation easement, that's what you'd be allowed under current zoning. On the other one, you'd be able to have, I've forgotten what it is, but it's, I think it may be five, all right? So there's like a total of like nine or 10 houses. And for that trade-off, the developer would like to ask hardship and seek to build more on the property that's underneath, to the tune of 269 homes. Now, I just have to give you a basic example because I don't know a lot of the law, but I live in South Asheville. I have a lot that's under a half acre. And if I wanted to expand the footprint of my home to go right up to the building, the lot line, I would be denied. They would say, no, you have setbacks. You can't. And if I said, well, wait, well, then why can't I build my house up three and four floors? Because it's a reasonable trade-off. You won't let me build out? You'd say, no, you can't do that. To me, this is, what is being asked for is unfair. Under current zone, zoning code, the developer is allowed, I think, some 90 homes on that lower parcel. Forget the conservation easements. Then he'd get another 10 maybe if he was to build up there because he'd require, the current zoning would require larger lots. This, to me, is the correct answer. The law should be applied evenly, and I don't see why the person should be given a large amount of latitude with the existing law. This, let the buyer beware. You knew what you were getting into. You bought this property, and your people knew that there were steep slopes and it was restrictive, and it was going to be a hard, a problem. Add on top of this, the traffic. I mean, we all know, and you've heard many, many times, how, I don't think anybody disagrees, that the traffic on Penner's Cove and Mills Gap is going to be a nightmare. And here's your opportunity to do the right thing for everybody. The developer can still, he's free to build his homes. I have 30 seconds. He's free to build his homes. I would welcome the neighbors. But what's being proposed is unfair. I think it's biased, quite honestly, that he would ask this, and I think it would be very improper for this board to approve it. So I agree with my two prior speakers, how they summarized. I think this should retain the designation of being a rural zone, and the law should be applied according to the ways I sort of outlined. Thank you for your time.
All right, thank you. And I'll ask folks not to applaud or boo or give any kind of feedback to the folks who speak. We'd like for folks to, hey, we'd like for folks to be able to speak and just say what they want to say without audience feedback one way or the other. Thank you. Last person that signed up is Margaret Stanley.
Hello, Mr. Chairperson and members of the board, fellow citizens and staff of Buncombe County. You've heard a lot of things about Penner's Cove, and I won't reiterate them. But I was thinking about it from another standpoint. Think of all the things you all have learned about. Yes, you were politicians. You got your office. You're in office, and all of a sudden, you're learning about trash trucks, and roads, and development, and fire, and everything else. And when you put some of that knowledge together and review capital improvement programs, where you're trying to have growth in a reasonable, logical way, what you're doing is allowing for a logical extension of services. So when a development comes in, you've got road capacity, fire protection, medical response, public safety response, available school capacity, library services, after-school programs are going to be available, access to public transit. You guys have learned a lot. And what happens when you pursue a plan, and Buncombe County has a great planning department, when you pursue a plan where you have a sustainable support for growth, it means that your densities are along transit corridors. It means that people who live there and work there have access to public services. It means that you're melding residential land use with job opportunities and grocery stores and libraries. That's the way we want to live. And you're also providing a sense of community and belonging when you have a reasonable, sustainable growth. And what you're doing out in Penner's Cove, what's being proposed to you is rural area and very high-density development. You may not have the schools or the libraries or the police protection, fire protection. You only have the roads. But one other thing is, let's say, the pump station that's shooting the sewage up over the top of the mountain loses electricity, and it can't pump. Does it have, does it have something?
Your time, your time is up.
Make it stop. And if not, it's a public health problem. Thank you.
All right, thank you. All right. Are there any other members of the public who would like to address the board? Okay, sure. We'll get to everyone. We'll start over with this gentleman. Yep.
Good evening. The accent is from London, England. I am an American citizen. I do vote. This is a, we're talking about Penner's Cove. It is a rural area. There are working farms on Penner's Cove. The proposed development is, at best, a suburban development. It's a high-density. It doesn't belong in a rural environment. Robinson Creek is already suffering from the water erosion. We're already losing private land to Robinson Creek through the natural order of erosion. Any development has got to take Robinson Creek into account because private citizens are going to be losing their land, and we're going to be losing a natural feature by developing over the top of Robinson Creek. Lastly, Penner's Cove Road itself. Never mind the traffic on Sweeten Creek. Never mind the traffic on Mills Gap. Penner's Cove is a narrow, windy road with plenty of blind spots, with plenty of residential mailboxes in those blind spots. I hope nobody gets killed even with the current traffic on what is a twisty, narrow, windy road. We do not need to add traffic onto Penner's Cove Road without putting in sidewalks, without putting in major widening of Penner's Cove Road. And we haven't got the money. We're not going to spend the money to put that sort of development into Penner's Cove Road. I'm asking you, please reject this proposal. Thank you.
All right. Yes, we'll go to you. Yes, sir. Yep, yep, please, please. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioners. My name is Doug Kalish. I'm a resident of Poplar Ridge, which is a neighborhood off of the Penner's Cove area. I also would like to ask you to reject this application for the land conservation permit. I do believe that from an infrastructure standpoint, the roads just can't handle that. And I also, I also have a concern about emergency services. I'm a former resident of Colorado. I was an elected official as well. I know the challenges and trade-offs that you have to make. Living where we do in Poplar Ridge, I'm already not sure how fast the response times would be for a fire truck or, you know, a large vehicle to come through. With the additional traffic that could come from this development, I do think that the incident response times would not be satisfactory. So for the reasons of fire safety and for infrastructure, I do ask that you reject this proposal. Thank you.
All right, thank you. All right, who else would like to speak? Start over here.
Good evening. I'm Celeste Selwyn. My husband and I have been residents in Penner's Cove for over 10 years now. We recognize since we moved to Penner's Cove that development would come. It's lovely. There's flat land. We're close to stores and shopping, all the things people want, except, of course, transportation or sewer. We also are aware of the need for affordable housing. Our daughter is currently worrying that her rental in West Asheville is probably going away in the spring. She works in the local service industry and can't afford to pay more than she is in a small rundown house with two roommates. So we get local housing issues. What I don't get is why anyone who questions development in their neighborhood is blasted as a NIMBY, not in my backyard, as though the rights of developers and the underhoused are more important than those of the people who live there. Of course, we have the right and even the duty to question development. We know the issues and our concerns are valid. We undoubtedly get this area in a way an out-of-state developer has no interest in understanding. You, as Commissioners, are hopefully looking at our issues as Ashvilleans and not as sponsors of development for development's sake. Penner's Cove only received water after the CTS Superfund site across Mills Gap ruined the wells in a large plume that came underground almost to the site in question. The people in the Cove have paid their environmental dues. They do not deserve to have sewer from some ill-advised subdivision poured into their waterways and environment as soon as a pump freezes or a pipe breaks. And who knew those things could happen? By the way, we had breaks on Weston and also on Penner's in the recent debacle. Our infrastructure is already under strain. So here's the bottom line. Infrastructure first. We know development is coming. Do it responsibly. Do it in a way that protects the environment and your constituents and not out-of-state developers and the county tax base. You can deny these ridiculous fake conservation easements and in doing so protect Ashvilleans from a bad precedent that threatens everything we in the mountains hold dear. Thank you.
All right, who else?
Good evening. My name is Lisa Wagner, and I live in the Oaks off Penner's Cove Road. And I'm following my very, very eloquent neighbors in describing what it's like to live off Penner's Cove Road. It is a rural area. I would like to add, not only are our neighbors present, but we also have animals that we consider our neighbors, the farms, the bears, the turkeys, the possums. A developer wants to come in, and that's fine, but is asking for easements, two easements that will connect a sewer line. And as a previous neighbor said, imagine for a minute that going up over the mountain, what happens? What happens when we lose power? We lose power when there is a storm. We lost water last year. The roads are crumbling. The traffic is so bad. I had an anxiety attack on Friday. And mental health is not a joke. Just thinking about going to get gas because traffic, no matter what time of day, is horrendous. And I shouldn't have to live like that, but I do because I love the rural area that we live in. And it is rural. It is not a complete community. It is rural. Please, please deny these easements on behalf of people that are not only residents of Asheville, but are stewards of the land. We all are. And please consider the future of Asheville when you do make your decisions. Thank you.
All right, thank you. All right, any others? Don Yilton.
Y'all know me. And honest or not, I had not planned on talking today because I figure if I kept my mouth shut, you'd wonder what I was up to. But this lady over here said something that I want to thank her for. She talked about CTS. None of you were up there. Some of you didn't even live in the county then. I exposed CTS a long time ago. I did, didn't I? It's been overlooked every since. And she finally brought it up. They had people out there that turned their shower on, and they would blackout because the TCE in the shower water. The EPA said it was an imminent hazard and needed immediate attention, and the state did not do anything about it. Notice the state. So what you're hearing is there are problems. Population. Have you heard about what's going on in Scottsdale, Arizona? I bet you haven't. They're having to cut their water off to people, their next-door neighbor, because they can't provide it for them. You see, there's a limit to how many people you can put in a certain area. There's a limit to growth. And I'm going to tell you something, folks. That limit is tied to your infrastructure. And if your infrastructure's not built, you will exceed it. And I think you just did over the Christmas holidays with the water lines bursted, and you had the city manager of Asheville sit right here, the mayor, and say, she didn't know the history of the water system from a cow coming in. Matter of fact, the cow coming in out of the rain would be smarter. So, folks, you better pay attention to what they're giving you. It is fact. And in all of that stuff, and they're saying, please, please, please. You ain't going to do nothing if somebody begs you to do it. You're only gonna do it if you see it tied to votes. And that's why I was here today, just to see how many turned out. And yeah, the number's growing. So each of you go home and get two or three more to come back next time and convince them you're not going to lay down and take it. Convince them that you will vote their butt out if they don't do what you want to do. Now, that's my advice to you. And I've given you 15 seconds back. Normally, I could do it right to the second.
Anyone else? All right, thank you. Next item on the agenda, we have under Presentations. The first is a proclamation recognizing Human Trafficking Awareness Month, and Commissioner Amanda Edwards will present the proclamation.
All right, I'm joined by Paulina Mendez and Jen from Our Voice This Evening. This is a County of Buncombe proclamation for Human Trafficking Awareness Month. Whereas, by presidential proclamation, each January has been designated National Human Trafficking Prevention Month. And whereas, human trafficking is the exploitative buying and selling of human beings for labor and sex acts. Whereas, the issue of human trafficking is a global, national, and local violation of human rights. And whereas, Buncombe County enjoys the benefits of being a global tourism destination, we also incur the increased risks of human trafficking due to the tourism industry and disposable income associated. And whereas, Buncombe County is committed to preventing human trafficking and has implemented a coordinated rapid-response team partnering with community organizations, including the Buncombe County Sheriff's Office, Buncombe County Department of Health and Human Services, the District Attorney's Office, Asheville Police Department, Mission Hospital, Our Voice, Pisgah Legal Services, Mountain Child Advocacy, the 100 Movement, and other agencies who are working together toward a community free from human trafficking. And whereas, Buncombe County is committed to supporting the safety of survivors of human trafficking and opened the Buncombe County Family Justice Center, where survivors can access coordinated support from different partner agencies, including law enforcement, nonprofit service providers, and healthcare services. And whereas, Buncombe County recognizes the strength of individuals in our community who have survived human trafficking, and encourages people to raise awareness, promote education, and support initiatives to address human trafficking. Whereas, Human Trafficking Awareness Month is an opportunity to stand with the survivors of human trafficking, to celebrate the progress we have made in combating these crimes, and to recommit to preventing human trafficking in Buncombe County. Now therefore be it proclaimed by the Board of Commissioners for the County of Buncombe in the State of North Carolina as follows: that the month of January 2023 be proclaimed Human Trafficking Awareness Month in Buncombe County. That this board does hereby urge all citizens to make the commitment to stop human trafficking by speaking out against violence and learning more about the resources available to survivors and their families. Signed by Brownie Newman, Chairman of the Buncombe County Board of Commissioners.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Thank you, commissioners, community members. My name is Jen. I am the program director at Our Voice. We work with survivors of sexual violence and human trafficking. I want to thank you for your support in raising awareness about Human Trafficking Awareness Month. We have quite a few events going on this month. We also want to recognize the survivors that we have in our community as well. So I want to thank you for the support. I want to thank you for our partnership. We were housed within the Family Justice Center, which is a Buncombe County building, and then also the partnership with the Chamber here as well. Thank you.
Thank you. And the next item on the agenda is a presentation on the Domestic Violence Fatality Review Team. And I believe Pauline is gonna come back up with some other folks to present this item. Thank you for helping us out with this one.
Yes, happy to be here. Um, my name is Paulina Mendez. I'm the Family Justice Program Manager. I also coordinate the Domestic Violence Fatality Review Team. And I am here with Kelda Harrison, the DBFRT's Domestic Violence Survivor Consultant, and Rebecca Smith, the Social Work Division Director and the Chair of the Domestic Violence Fatality Review Team. We can't start a conversation about domestic violence fatality without discussing the prevalence of intimate partner violence. IPV is extremely common. Recent data shows that about 41% of women and 26% of men experienced intimate partner violence in their lifetime, including sexual violence, physical violence, psychological aggression, and stalking. And the most common impacts reported include injury, post traumatic stress disorder symptoms, concern for safety, fear, needing help from law enforcement, and missing at least one day of work. According to the CDC, intimate partner violence is a serious public health problem in the United States that can have profound impact on lifelong health, opportunity, and well being. After spending time reviewing the case and the findings and recommendations that we're gonna share and make with you today, we saw a strong connection to this national level data that we want to share with you related to gun violence and mass shootings. A study done by Geller et al. published in 2021 looked at the connection between mass shootings and domestic violence from 2014 to 2019. What they found was most mass shootings that are related to DV and that DV related shootings had higher case fatality rates than those unrelated to DV. The study found that 59.1% of the mass shootings were DV related. In 68.2% of the mass shootings, the perpetrator either killed at least one partner or family member or had a history of DV. There was a fatality rate of 83.7% when the mass shooting was DV related. And of the perpetrators that died in the shooting, 70.9% died by firearm suicide. You'll see the connection of this research to our findings and recommendations that we'll be presenting. We share that national level data, but we're bringing it back to Buncombe County. We are fortunate that in Buncombe County, we're working to train our law enforcement officers with Dr. Campbell's nationally recognized practice to prevent intimate partner homicides and serious injuries known as the lethality assessment program protocol, or the LAP protocol. In short, LAP is a lethality screen and protocol done by trained law enforcement officers at the scene of a domestic violence call to assess the risk of homicide. The law enforcement officer will ask evidence based questions known as the lethality screening, then privately inform the survivor of any concerns and work to connect them to our local domestic violence organization HelpMate, especially if the situation has been identified as high danger. At the Family Justice Center and through HelpMate, we also conduct more in depth danger assessments, which also screen for the risk of homicide through intake, through intakes at the Family Justice Center, HelpMate hotline calls, and HelpMate shelter intakes. As you can see, the number of LAP reports and danger assessments have been increasing since FY19. You'll see that for the LAP protocol, which again is a reminder happened externally. These are happening on the scene of domestic violence calls. There was a jump that can be attributed to COVID. And that slight increase that continues to go up shows a natural progression of calls that we're receiving. The danger assessments, that initial jump can also be attributed to COVID and the increased violence that we saw during the pandemic, during the beginning of the pandemic. Um, and that second increase can be attributed due to an increased awareness of services and just people needing more services and coming in for more services. And we'll share the responses of the LAP and danger assessments on the next slide. This graphic shows the responses to seven of the high risk lethality indicators that are on the Buncombe County LAP and danger assessment data. I want to point to FY22 just because there's such a big increase there. Um, and there's an increase in the responses to the questions that are both on the LAP and on the danger assessment. This increase is partially related to us improving the way we're collecting data and how we're reporting on the data. But it's also goes back to what I showed you on the previous slide and the increase in the amount of danger assessments that we are doing through FJC intake, HelpMate hotline calls, and HelpMate shelter intake. And multiple of these risk factors aligned with the case that we reviewed.
Good evening, everyone. As Paulina said, I'm Rebecca Smith. I'm the Director of Social Work for Buncombe County Health and Human Services. And I have the privilege of being the Chair of the Domestic Violence Fatality Review Team for the first time this year. So it's a new experience for me and I'm happy to be here. Um, I had to bring in some statistics related to Child Protective Services, kind of showing that overlap in my role here. But as in many intimate partner violence and domestic violence situations, children were involved and impacted in the most recent fatality that we reviewed. Such we thought it was important to share the mandate that we have as Buncombe County Health and Human Services, Child Protective Services, to respond and address child neglect or abuse associated with intimate partner violence and domestic violence. When there are allegations of children witnessing or experiencing domestic violence, Child Protective Services is contacted and families are assessed to determine whether or not the violence has risen to the level of creating imminent risk of harm to the children. As you can see from the chart, calls to CPS alleging neglect or abuse through domestic violence have steadily risen over the last few years. At the same time, calls and reports have gone up. Findings related to child malt treatment have gone down as we have worked to better support the non offending parents in these cases and keep children safe and together with them. Of the cases where children have been malt treated as a result of domestic violence and are at imminent risk of harm, some of the children are at such a great risk that they must be removed from their homes and enter the custody of social services. You will see again, the number of children entering custody as a result of domestic violence has decreased as we have continued to implement Safe and Together by keeping children safe and together with a non offending parent, partnering with a non offending parent as a default position, and intervening with the perpetrator to reduce risk and harm to children. The next slide we want to show you this evening. Just thought it was gonna magically happen. Um, the next slide we want to show you this evening is related to the cost, the annual costs of domestic violence in Buncombe County specifically. So clearly, domestic violence impacts the work we do at the county through services provided at the Family Justice Center, through our justice service programs, and through Child Protective Services. But what is the big picture cost of intimate partner violence for Buncombe County? A study by the Jamie Kimball Foundation for Courage found that in fiscal year 2017 and 2018, the total cost of domestic violence for Buncombe County was estimated to be approximately $14 million. You can see that breakdown on this slide. It is important to note that this is just a snapshot for one year and does not show the generational costs of domestic violence. You'll see that these costs not only affect individuals, but are broader, um, are broader community impacts as well. Not only is domestic violence prevalent, but it is insidious and intersects with all our systems and institutions. This brings us to talk about domestic violence related homicides in Buncombe County. As you may know, these conversations started in 2013 because Buncombe County tied with Wake County to have the second highest rate of domestic violence homicides in North Carolina. Additionally, you may also hear intimate partner violence and domestic violence used interchangeably. So we want to distinguish the two because the Domestic Violence Fatality Review Team focuses on intimate partner violence related homicides. Intimate partner violence is abuse or aggression that occurs in a romantic relationship. Intimate partner refers to both current and former spouses and dating partners. It can include physical violence, sexual violence, stalking, and psychological aggression. Domestic violence refers to violence that happens in the home. So while it can be between intimate partners, it can also be between other members of the household. For example, parents and children. What you see in this graph is the number of domestic violence homicides we've had since 2013, differentiated by whether they were domestic violence or intimate partner violence. It is also important to note that some incidents involve one homicide, while others can involve multiple deaths in one incident. For example, in 2014, that could have been one incident with two homicides or two separate incidents. You'll also see that the number of homicides in our county have continued to trend down. We have hoped that these numbers will continue to decrease. And we also know we have more work ahead of us to reach this goal. So that brings us to talk a little bit more about the Domestic Violence Fatality Review Team here in Buncombe County, which was established through General Statute Session Law 200952 and 201370. And, um, our Domestic Violence Fatality Review Team reviews one case per year and works to send a report to the state every three years, compiling those three cases that were reviewed, looking at trends, and looking at those, um, those patterns over time as we send that information up to the state. As you can see from the slide, our Domestic Violence Fatality Review Team does an in depth look at each case. We spend time pulling records from across multiple community partners. And we have, um, our team is made up of community partner representatives, such as, um, we have a judge on our team. We have, um, folks from Vaya, from our educational partners. We have individuals with lived experience, folks from Child Protective Services and from our Family Justice Center partners. During this overview of the work that we have done through our Fatality Review Team, we can't talk about the specific case we reviewed, but we can talk about the broader impacts of what happened. If there is anything we can do to prevent a tragedy like this from happening again, we should. Um, so this slide just provides you with an overview timeline of the work that we've done in our Buncombe County Domestic Violence Fatality Review Team. As you may have, may remember, our timeline was thrown off slightly due to COVID. But we are back on track now. And we presented findings and information from our last review in February of 2022. And then we began the work again to, um, to pull and gather the records needed to complete this review. We spent two days dissecting the case in detail and developing our findings. And then we spent several months working on those findings and recommendations with the team. While we are working to prevent homicides, we can keep in mind that this is a small fraction of the larger work that we do. What we do on this team helps inform the rest of the work happening as a part of the coordinated community response to domestic violence and sexual assault and state level efforts. Um, so these are the findings from the 2022 Domestic Violence Fatality Review. And I'm going to read them aloud from the slide. We found multifaceted life stress, multi generational historical and community trauma involved in this case. A legally obtained firearm was the murder weapon used by the perpetrator during the attack. Financial insecurity and lack of access to transportation were used to maintain coercive control. The opportunity to intervene was limited by a short escalation window. There were few intersections with conventional systems of support. The lack of record sharing between jurisdictions across state lines makes it difficult to identify history of violence or other historical indicators of domestic violence. The statute allows limited and specified participation on the review panel and currently does not intentionally prioritize diversity or individuals with lived experience. Um, so these were our team's takeaways and what stood out to us. And on the next slides that Kelda is gonna present, she's gonna go over the recommendations that came from these findings. Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening. I'm Kelda Harrison and I am a survivor of domestic violence here in Buncombe County. I've worked, I've had to work within the court systems here and also work with the agencies that support survivors of domestic violence. And I feel really privileged to be on the Fatality Review Team because it provides a very concrete way to try and create changes in the systems that exist where we see gaps and also a way to work together with all the agencies and people involved. So it's been a great opportunity for me. We came, as you can see, there's a pretty grim statistical, um, picture around domestic violence. Um, but we came up with some recommendations that will hopefully help prevent domestic violence and domestic violence fatalities in the future. Um, our first recommendation is surrounds community connection and prevention. We recommend expanding funding and support for prevention services in our school. For example, the healthy relationship education. We also recommend to continue to support organizations focused on social determinants of health that provide tangible support to families. We recommend strengthening educational and career development opportunities to provide hope and pathways out of generational poverty. We also recommend to treat people who have lived experience or established community trust as the experts and to give them the resources needed to impact change. Um, our second recommendation involves legislation and advocacy. Uh, we ask that you expand established strategic priorities that already exist, like educated and capable communities and vibrant economy. We recommend requiring purchase permits for all firearms. We recommend advocating for amendment of automatic expunions to not include domestic violence related charges. That was a big gap we found as we reviewed the case. It was hard to get any history. We recommend advocating to revisit the adoption of House Bill 525 as well as any other legislation that limits access to firearms of domestic, of violent domestic violence offenders. And we recommend creating an accountability work group to follow up on how our recommendations here are implemented in legislation at local and state levels. We've been curious about that. And so I think we all decided it would be a really good idea to have some kind of work group that explored how the recommendations were implemented. Um, our third-
May I ask a question?
Sure.
Are any of those policies ones that could be implemented at the local level? Or are they all regulated by the state?
That's a really good question. So I think some are state, but I do think that with the purchase of permits and firearms, if I'm not mistaken, that's something that we can look at on a local level. But I can also double check and get back with you.
You can check. My general understanding is that a lot of those issues are regulated by states and they don't delegate much authority to the local cities or counties. But if there's additional information on that, that'd be great.
Yeah, and as a reminder, we're rolling these up to the state as well, so that does include state level.
Thank you.
Um, our third recommendation involves equity and inclusion. We recommend being intentional to include domestic violence fatality review team members with representation from diverse backgrounds and with different lived experiences. And also to increase the number of at large members for the North Carolina Domestic Violence Fatality Review Teams. Our fourth and final recommendation identifies some cross system opportunities. We recommend removing barriers to access- We recommend removing barriers to accessing and navigating court systems and resources, including supporting peer support navigator, social work access onsite, and funding for community organizations that provide services. We also would like to ask that screening protocols at provider agencies are reviewed so that the disclosure feels more safe when they wish to disclose domestic violence. We also recommend creating a domestic violence-specific multidisciplinary team to include fiscal legal services, the DA's office, help me law enforcement, pre-trial, spark, the VA, and probation. And one of the most encouraging things that I've seen by, from being on the Domestic Violence Fatality Review Team is that it's been amazing to see agencies work together and identify problems and solutions.
So a quick question on that last item, the multidisciplinary team. Is that something that would live at Family Justice Center or build on existing collaborations that exist? Maybe flesh out a little bit for us some of the new ways it would function?
Yeah, that's a really great question. I think the intention of the Family Justice Center, one of the intentions of the Family Justice Center was that it would serve as a springboard for things like the DBFRT or additional groups like the multidisciplinary team. And I don't know if it would necessarily live in the Family Justice Center, but it would definitely be a part of the work happening at the Family Justice Center. I think one of the, with the recommendations, we have the recommendations, but we haven't fleshed out a like, and this is how we're going to do every one of them. So to just kind of answer your question, I think there is a strong possibility that it would live there, but it would include a lot of the different partners that we already-
And it would focus on some of the barriers in the first bullet item, is that helping?
Yeah.
Okay, gotcha. Thank you very much. I appreciate that.
Can I add to that real quick?
I would just say that we do currently have a multidisciplinary team dedicated to child abuse cases in our county, and so I think looking at that process and how we were able to pull that together would be a great way, a great place to start.
I'd be curious to chat with you all about that at some point and just kind of brainstorm what that looks like. I notice you, did you expressly exclude a judge for a reason? Or is that something you could, you'd consider for this kind of team? I don't want to get in the way of your vision. I'm just curious about the thought process there.
So just like, so you might have noticed as well that Child Protective Services is not listed as one of the partners. So there's definitely some concern related to some confidentiality issues and things that cannot be shared in that setting. We have explored some of those options, and I think we would talk with Judge Scott, who sits on our Domestic Violence Fatality Review Team, just in terms of what would be possible.
Excellent.
Thank you both. So here are the sources we used in our statistics if you would like to study them further. And we are grateful to be able to share this information with you today because we know that domestic violence thrives in the shadows. While these conversations can be uncomfortable, it's important that we have them so that Buncombe County can continue to eliminate domestic violence from our communities and interrupt intergenerational trauma. We have that opportunity, and we appreciate your support and the broader community's support in creating a safe and healthy community where all residents thrive. So thank you so much.
Thank you to all of you. We really appreciate it.
Thank you.
All right, commissioners, no public hearing on the agenda this evening. Next is county manager's report.
No report.
Very good. No old business items, new business. Resolution authorizing a grant of franchise for convalescent ambulance transportation to Mount Area Ground Non-Emergency Transportation LLC. Michael Thru will present this item, maybe with some help from some other folks. And we've had a presentation about this at the last meeting, so.
I'll need some help for this one. So Michael Thru here with Jamie Judd. We have MAGNET, which stands for Mountain Area Ground Non-Emergency Transportation. Principals are Tona Campbell and Chris Roberts. They've applied for a convalescent franchise here in the county. Reviewing the application and the discussions with the MAGNET team and EMS with Taylor as well, having reviewed, it appears to us in the court, and the board would have to make the finding that the public will be served by the franchise, that the application is complete and accurate, that they have the ability to provide safe, adequate, and responsible services, and they're in the process of obtaining all applicable licenses from OEMS. The request would be for a one-year term with the option to renew for an additional four years at the discretion of the county, and that discretion would be exercised by OEMS following the first year of service. And I'll turn this over to Mr. Judd.
Thank you. Good evening. So again, we've reviewed MAGNET's request. From an EMS system standpoint, we support their award of a franchise. They have, you know, been established in the community for several years. Have worked with some of the local partners, including Land of Sky, providing ambulatory and wheelchair-based services and looking to expand into the stretcher transport services that then requires the franchise under our ordinance and under state EMS rule. So we do support their franchise request and move forward with getting them licensed and functioning inside the county.
All right, excellent. Thank you so much. Commissioners, any questions? Is there a motion?
Motion to approve the resolution authorizing a grant of the franchise.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, thank you very much. Next is a resolution in support of Friends of Fonta Flora State Trail. And Allison Danes will share some information on this item.
Hello, good evening, Mr. Chair, Commissioners. Here to present the resolution of support for Friends of Fonta Flora State Trail. My name's Allison Danes. I'm the Director of Buncombe County Parks Recreation. Happy to be here. So a little bit of background is the Friends of, the Fonta Flora Trail is a 100-mile state trail where hiking and biking that will connect Morganton to Asheville and is identified in the DOT's Great Trail State Plan. Another point of interest is commission adopted a resolution in 2016 to adopt the expanded scope of that trail to include the Buncombe County Trail System of Black Mountain piece that we're talking about specifically, that piece of the trail through the Greenway system of Black Mountain. The Friends of Fonta State Trail was selected to participate in the plan by the NC DOT as it was opened by the IMD Paved Trails and Sidewalk Feasibility Study Grant to continue the study of the routes identified in the plan. The Friends of Fonta Flora State Trail is now applying for grant funds to study the segment from the eastern boundary of Black Mountain to the Buncombe County-McDowell County line. And the reason that they're looking for the eastern bound of Black Mountain is that Black Mountain is already studying the additional segment that runs through the actual town of Black Mountain. So this would be an expanded look at the feasibility from that eastern point to the Buncombe County line. They're not requesting any funds for what this resolution is, just for support of the project moving forward. With that, I have a map here that identifies the specific area that they are looking at to study. And you'll notice in yellow here that it's an approximate two-mile trail feasibility study, again, from that eastern portion there to the county line. So with that, requesting that the Commissioners approve the resolution in support of Friends of Fonta Flora State Trail grant application.
All right, great job. Any questions?
I just have a quick one. Can you, I think I missed it in your, in your description of, is it NC DOT that they're applying for funds from?
Yes.
Okay.
It is the NC DOT that they're applying funds for the, yes, for the conceptual study.
And it's for, it's specifically for funding for a study from a third-party-
Correct.
-engineering firm presumably of some kind. Okay, thank you.
Motion to approve the resolution in support.
Second.
Further discussion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Great. All right, the last item under new business is a budget resolution to establish budget for 2022 Go Bonds. And John Hudson's here to present this item.
Good evening, Commissioners. This budget amendment establishes two administrative projects, one for the Affordable Housing Bond and one for the Open Space Bond, with corresponding budgets for the 2022 General Obligation Bonds and a multi-year fund dedicated to the use of the bonds. The budget provides salary and benefits and associated operating costs for two bond managers for seven years. Future projects for the bonds will be brought via budget amendment or ordinance and budgeted by project.
Any questions? Is there a motion to approve?
Motion to approve the budget amendment and establish two bond positions.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thanks, John. All right, Commissioners, we have several board appointments to make. First, under Community Transportation Advisory Board, I will make a motion to reappoint Gary Ray and to appoint Kim West.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, we now come to the Community Reparations Commission. There's a, we need to appoint one regular member and then two alternates. And so what I'd like to suggest is that we first appoint the regular member, and then once we've made that decision, we'll move on to the two alternate positions. So we could go around and everyone could identify the person that they're most supportive of in terms of the position. However, just from a process standpoint, there's a lot of applicants. So it may be that someone might be identified, even though they only get maybe two or three Commissioners to identify them. So we could, I'm just kind of thinking out loud here, I'm sorry I didn't think about this before. We could identify the top two, and then we could have the Commission select between them, you know, so kind of narrow it down to two at first, like who gets the two top vote-getters, so to speak, and then, and then poll the board on which they would prefer. Would that be acceptable? To make sure there's a majority of the board. Yeah.
And maybe that is what it is. I just wondered, if we're going to have three, what if we go ahead and say our top three?
Well, we could say our top three. That's maybe an interesting suggestion. And then whoever gets the most support would get the regular seat, and the other two would become the alternates. So maybe that's a simpler, is that, is that your idea, Terry? Yeah. So everyone votes for three, and then the overall top vote-getter becomes the regular position, the other two top vote-getters receive the alternate.
Rank choice.
Rank choice voting, basically.
We do it this way. I think it would be easier. Let's everybody vote for the person who's going to be the member. You know, the one who will be the member. And then we go back and vote for the two who will be alternates. To me, that would be easy.
Okay, I'm open, I'm open to either. Yeah, so. Okay, so let me ask you this, though, Al. Do we, or Commissioners, like, do we want to make sure, because someone could, again, there's just so many applicants. Someone might win with literally maybe two or three Commissioners only. So a majority of the Commissioners would be voting for someone else. Maybe that's fine. Why don't we just, you want to just go with that?
Let's give it a try.
Yeah, let's try.
All right. Start over. Any other comments on the process? We're picking, who do you want-
The regular.
For the regular position? Yep.
Gotcha.
And then? Yep, all right.
Okay.
Commissioner Edwards.
Dwayne McAfee.
Dwayne McAfee.
Dwayne McAfee.
All right, Dwayne McAfee.
Dwayne McAfee.
Dwayne McAfee.
Dwayne McAfee.
My concerns were completely unfounded. Here's what I know. All right, now let's all go through, and you get two more votes. And then whoever the top two vote-getters are will be appointed as alternates. And we'll start over on Martin's side this time.
I think you're picking someone who was not present for those interviews, so I might not be the best person to start with. I like Bobby Smith's application. I didn't have a chance to meet with him in person, but whatever that's worth. And I'm open to suggestions on the other.
All right, Terry.
Ronnie Copeland and Jesse Ray.
Jasmine?
Ronnie Copeland and Jesse Ray.
I'm going to vote for Spencer Hardaway and Ronnie Copeland.
I had Ronnie Copeland and Jesse Ray.
Spencer Hardaway and Jesse Ray.
Ronnie Copeland and Spencer Hardaway.
Okay, so I think Ronnie Copeland and Jesse Ray got the most. Is that what you found too, Lamar?
It is.
Okay. Okay, all right. Thank you very much to everyone who applied. We now come to strategic partners. And we start over on Amanda's side. And so there's three positions, so each Commissioner can vote for up to three applicants. And whoever the top three are will get the appointments.
All right. Amy Russell, Katherine Kaiser Ray, and Mark Mickey.
Okay.
I have the same ones. Amy Russell, Katherine Kaiser Ray, and Mark Mickey.
All right.
Amy Russell, Corey Jackson, and Mark Mickey.
I'm going to go for Amy Russell, Patrick Fitzsimmons, and Mark Mickey.
Amy Russell, Corey Jackson, and Patrick Fitzsimmons.
Amy Russell, Mark Mickey, and Corey Jackson.
Amy Russell, Katherine Kaiser Ray, and Patrick Fitzsimmons.
This is a horse race. So Amy Russell is appointed, and then I think, and Mark Mickey. And then there's three candidates, so I believe received three votes each, which is Corey Jackson, Patrick Fitzsimmons, and Katherine Kaiser Ray. Lamar, is that consistent with what you have?
It is.
All right, so I think we need to go back around one more time. And each Commissioner will vote one time, choosing among those three applicants. So Martin, we'll bring it back over to your side again. And Corey Jackson, Patrick Fitzsimmons, or Katherine Kaiser Ray?
Katherine Kaiser Ray.
Corey Jackson.
Ray Jackson.
Katherine Kaiser Ray.
Um, yeah, I'll go with Katherine Kaiser Ray.
Katherine Kaiser Ray.
Katherine Kaiser Ray.
All right, so Katherine Kaiser Ray got the most votes. All right, we now come to the Woodfinn Water Board, and we've got one appointment. This is to fill a vacancy until the next Woodfinn Water District election. So it's kind of an unusual, it's unusual for us to appoint this normally in elected position, but under statute, the Commissioners need to fill vacancies. So Amanda, we'll start over here with you.
Gordon Mayberry.
Gordon Mayberry.
Gordon Mayberry.
Gordon Mayberry.
Gordon Mayberry.
Gordon Mayberry.
All right. All right, we appreciate everyone who applied for the various boards and commissions. I have a couple of announcements.
If you may, can I address the board real quick? I just want to remind you that we have a couple of other potential appointments or interviews that we need to have going forward.
Yes.
Land of Sky, General Obligation Bond- Land of Sky, General Obligation Bonds, and I don't know if we need to have a conversation about the water?
We do.
The Independent Review Commission.
Yep. Let's take that up first. The Independent Water Review Committee, and so the city council voted to create the Independent Water Review Committee, it'll have a total of nine members, two will be appointed by the county. The city will make their seven appointments at their next meeting in one week from today, and they want us to make our, two appointments at our next meeting two weeks from today. So, when we make our appointments, we will have the benefit of knowing who the city council's already appointed, and therefore, kind of what types of expertise or perspectives might still be particularly valuable to round out the group. There's obviously a lot of community interest in this topic, so we might get a lot of applicants. So, I wanted to suggest a process to kind of keep the, this manageable. Here's what I'll just put on the table. What if, and so we'll take applications for the next seven to 10 days or thereabouts, or maybe we need to ask Lamar to advise us on that, but we'll, we'll need to open it up and then cut it off so they can arrange interviews. And what I wanted to suggest is that maybe each commissioner be able to review the applicants and identify the candidate that you most want to interview. And so, in that way, I mean, if some people I've interviewed, want the same person, it could be less than seven, but it would be a maximum of seven interviews. So, that way, if we get 30 interviews, we've got a process where everybody gets to make sure you get to interview the person, that seems really strong. So, would that be a workable process for us, considering we want to keep this thing moving ahead? Okay. This is the place where we just make a process on the spot, because every situation's a little different, it seems like. Okay, and Lamar, what would you recommend in terms of how long we keep this process open? We've already gotten a lot of folks contacting us, and those will all be, we'll follow up with all those folks to make sure they can apply. So, but you need time to schedule interviews too, so how, when should we cut this off?
So, I would advise that we open it up tomorrow, and we go through the week, at least give them the weekend to go through potentially next Tuesday, so we have a week-long process of them being able to apply, apply, and then we can send it out to you as soon as it closes on Tuesday. Let's say we end it at Tuesday at 5:00, we can get those applications out to you Wednesday, and that gives us about two to three days to schedule the interviews. It, it still would be a quick turnaround, but we can also put in there, in the advertisement, that interviews will probably be held on February the 7th, just to kind of give them some information to kind of know when the interviews will be held.
Yeah, yeah, you might even put that in the announcement or something like that, just so people know, like, that's when it will be done. And if someone needs to Zoom or something, we, I guess we could do that, but that will be the day that needs to happen, I think, although maybe we should talk for a moment about what time of the day we're gonna do that, because we have an Affordable Housing Committee meeting that day, I believe, that's our scheduled time. Sybil, is that correct? Yeah. So, we've got a meeting at 1:00 to 2:30, is that also early childhood day? And what time does that meeting end? So, we could do it at like 11:30, something like that, does that work for everyone?
11:30.
11:30 a.m. meeting to get done by 1:00? Right, okay, 11:30 work for everyone else? All right, well, let's plan on, you could even just put that in the announcement if you want to, 11:30 to 1:00 on the 7th is when we'll interview folks. All right. And maybe everyone just make a note on your calendar to check your emails Tuesday afternoon, Wednesday morning, to send your, send your, Wednesday morning, send your recommendation to Lamar for who you'd like to interview. Yep. I think that's all correct. Yes, there's a bunch, there's, it's mostly, it's pretty heavy on technical expertise, and then with some like citizen and business customer perspective as well. And I think they, yeah, well, so they'll, you know, certainly be appointing a lot of the technical positions since that's most of what's out there. All right, yeah, and so, any members of the public interested in serving on this Independent Water Review Committee, please go to the county website and apply in the next week.
So, just to clarify this, we will get all the applications in, and they may be very diverse in what we get. We're gonna send all of the applications to you, and you're gonna decide, because obviously, like you said, the city would probably already have appointed their positions, and then you'll just go through them and pick the ones that fit the category that you're trying to appoint.
That's right, well, I'll identify the person we like the most. If you can send us additional information about who the city, who the city council's appointed, so we know that, that'd be helpful in us kind of focusing on, so we, so we have that information. And then, the other thing I'd say, Lamar, is that if we're really getting a lot of applicants, if maybe, maybe, maybe midweek or something, send us what you've got, so that if there's a lot, we don't have to review a ton of them, you know, all at one time. So, if you get a bunch, just kind of maybe send us, send us some stuff that's coming in, so then we can kind of work on it over the course of the week instead of just on Tuesday, Wednesday.
We can do that.
All right, fantastic. All right, Land of Sky, can you remind us what's the status on that, or what do we need to do? Is that a commission appointment?
Yes, this is a vacancy for Economic Development Representative. I think the person had been in this position for a while, and this is a board appointment for this, and we have currently six applicants, no, seven applicants, sorry, seven applicants for that.
And has that, I'm sorry, just remind me, has that information, have the applicants been circulated to the commissioners?
Not sure, possibly, but I would check on, I don't think Stacy, maybe Stacy hadn't, but we can get those applications circulated.
Okay, well, why don't we, do we want to discuss that in more detail at the next meeting, once we've got all the applicants to review and decide who, who we want to interview or appoint? Great. All right, let's take that up at the next meeting, and, and then what was the other one, Lamar?
The General Obligations Bonds Community Oversight Committee.
Okay, and that's for all the positions associated with that?
Yeah, there are five members, the chamber will make one appointment, but the board needs to make four appointments.
Okay, and have we advertised for those positions?
We have.
And do we have applicants for each of the different types of appointments?
We have five applicants, and it looks like we have an applicant, at least an applicant for each of the four areas that we will be appointing.
Why don't we keep that?
We can send that, we can send that information to you as well with the other committee information.
I would suggest we keep that process open, and, and then let's also discuss that at the next meeting. This is kind of a long-term position, because it's gonna, so we don't need to rush, we need to make sure we get, you know, all those appointments filled, but this is to kind of monitor this over time. So, let's keep it open, and again, to members of the public, and our communications folks, let's make sure we get the word out that, hey, you know, these bonds passed, and we are looking for folks to serve on this Oversight Committee, and there's particular expertise in like banking, accounting, what are the different positions again, Lamar?
Affordable housing.
Affordable housing.
And conservation and greenways.
Conservation and greenways, yeah.
And, like I said, one member appointed by the chamber as well.
Okay, let's, so let's keep it open, and then let's review the applicants that have come in by our next meeting and see if we're ready to go ahead and interview, or if we need to continue looking for some of the positions. And, all right, is that, is that it?
Yeah, that's it, and in the meantime, we'll get you those applications for those committees.
Excellent. All right, we've got a few announcements. January 25th at 12:30 p.m., there'll be a joint Asheville City Council-Buncombe County Commission meeting with the National Alliance to End Homelessness. The work session will be held at Harrah's Community Center, 87 Haywood Street, Asheville, North Carolina, 2881. January 30th at 10:30 a.m., the commissioners will hold their legislative agenda meeting with members of the North Carolina General Assembly Delegation at 115 Hendersonville Road, Burley B. Room, Asheville, NC 2883. February 7th at 3:00 p.m., the commissioners briefing meeting will be held at 200 College Street, Room 326 in downtown Asheville. And at 5:00 p.m. on 7, on February 7th, the commissioners will hold a regular meeting at 200 College Street, Room 326 in downtown Asheville. Is there a motion to adjourn? All in favor, say aye. Aye, any opposed? We're adjourned.